Here.
Dr. Jordan here.
Ms. Jordan, here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Ms. Lau?
Here.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Shawsey?
Here.
Shear?
Here.
Mr. Spicer?
Here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We have a motion for executive.
So moved.
Second.
Matters listed, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimously adopted. So we'll go into executive session.
Go right.
All the meetings to public sessions to order. We have no business coming out of executive session, so the next item on the agenda is public participation. Are there any members of the public here who would like to address the board? No response, we'll move on to minutes of the January, the January 8th.
So moved.
Minutes.
Second.
Second, any corrections or changes, your comments. Bring none, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimously adopted. Superintendent's report, Dr. Pennino.
Thank you, Mr. Shawsey. First up in the superintendent's report, we have the principal of J. Watson Bailey Middle School, Ms. Deb Fitzgerald, and her two assistant principals.
And my intern.
Oh, and your intern. They're going to give us their mid-year report on.
Hi everyone.
Hello.
Hello. Tonight I did bring some cheat sheets, so I don't ramble. So tonight I want to just share with you a glance of what has happened at Bailey this past year. We've had a lot of, lot of different things going on. First, I want to introduce my staff. This is Shelley Anne Coridia. She is one of the assistant principals, one of our newcomers, Andy Cameron. He is also one of the APs. He started with us in October.
December.
December. It feels like October.
You said it, not me. And my intern Andrea Barnhart, she has been a special ed teacher in our district for many years, and she has decided to see what, see what the hype is on being an administrator. So she has, she has agreed to help me out here. So I want to jump in right away and say, the next three slides that I have here are very personal to me, because as you know, I have worked in elementary, I have worked in middle school now, and I have worked at the high school. And one thing that we have, that everything is in common, this is a K through 12 district. This is not elementary, this is not just middle school, this is not just high school. So our main goal is to get every single one of our students in this district to walk across that stage at the end of June in their cabin gown. And in order to do that, it's a group effort. It's not just both middle schools, it's not just the middle schools and the high school, but it's everybody. And the first thing that we're doing, that I want to talk about, is attendance. This year, we have a new social worker attendance person, and we really did hit the jackpot with her, because her experience, she worked many, many years, I don't know the exact number, of, she worked in the county office with DSS. So when we were sending our kids, or when we were calling Child Protective Services for educational neglect, you know, those things, she was one of the caseworkers that was working with many of our students. So she jumped ship, and she came over to Bailey and Miller. And she has had an eye opening. So, you know, all the complaints that we were crying to her and to the other staff at Department of Social Services, she is now seeing firsthand what we are going through. And she really is trying to make sure that all of our kids are coming to school. This is something that she takes very serious, and I am really happy to have her on our staff. So she worked with the county, she has worked closely with the county, and one thing that the county came up with, they were awarded a $38,000 grant for something. I don't know exactly what it was, but they called us, actually they called Stephanie, and I heard Stephanie scream from her office with excitement, that with that $38,000 that the county received, they are willing to give us a full-time attendance person to assist Stephanie with getting all of our kids to school. So from the grant, Stephanie was able to work with the county, and the county worked with the family of Woodstock, which we also work with. And the person that is assisting Stephanie is Stephanie Hine, so we call it Stephanie Square. But she is part of the family of Woodstock, and she, she has been helping Steph right by her side, going to the houses, getting the students into school, talking with the parents, coming up with strategies on how to help the families get the kids to school. One of the other things that Stephanie did was at back-to-school night, she created this big display for our front lobby, where parents, that would be the first thing that she saw. And she made it not, not a nuisance, but she was firm, she was explaining how attendance affects all of us. She is also developing resources for our L students. Our L students are the ones, are the students that are chronically late, chronically not coming to school. And one of those reasons is because a lot of the kids are working. You know, they might be in eighth grade, but they're still out there, they're getting jobs, whether it be a dishwasher, under the table, they're working, they're helping their families take care of their siblings, so the, you know, the parents can go to work. So she is putting together with our L teachers, resources for our, the families, so they understand what the expectations are, and, you know, what to expect when they come into school. And then the other thing that she is working on is a mentor-me program. We've all heard of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, that doesn't exist anymore. Our students need mentors. So she's taking it upon herself, and she's working with several different school districts now, to create this mentor-me program. It is just at the beginning, but what will happen is, she is putting out emails to all of our teachers in the district, asking, you know, would you like to be a mentor for, you know, one of our students in, in the district? I don't know how many we're going to get, but it's out there, and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, start making a difference, more so than what we already do in a child stuff. The next thing that's pretty important to me is the class credit enrollment. I'm just going to tell you a really quick story. When I was at the high school, doing the ninth grade academy, I would see all of these students coming into the high school with credits towards graduation, which is a great, great thing. But you know what? Those students that had those credits coming into the high school, those are the students that had all of the supports that they needed. They had, you know, people pushing them. They had the materials that they needed at school. They had all the supplies. The students that were not benefiting from that were, our students are economically disadvantaged students, our special ed students, our students that didn't have support at home. And this is what you saw last year, and previous years. This is just a quick snapshot. So for instance, last year, we had 54 students in algebra last year. There was only one black African-American student, there was two multiracial, three Hispanic, 43 white, and two special ed. I'm not going to go through all of these numbers, I'll let you look at them, but you can see that we had potentially 167 students come away with credits up to the high school. This year, with brainstorming with both middle schools, and with the assistance of Dr. Olivetto, Ms. Bonville, all of administration up at Central, we see something very different. We see that there are more students that are coming to the high school, I should say, will be coming to the high school with credits. Students that we normally would not see. So accelerated math, we just started this, this year. So that is for our seventh grade students. Before last year, they would take seventh grade math, and then those students who qualified, they would jump right into algebra. Now what we're doing is, we are choosing our students to go into accelerated math in seventh grade, so hopefully, the goal is to get more students taking that accelerated, taking that algebra course. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay? Oops, sorry. Sorry. So, so this year, we have 41 seventh graders in accelerated math. This is our proportionality numbers for our whole school. So 8.4% of our population is black African-American, multiracial, 8.1, Hispanic, 25.1, white, 55.1, and special ed, 21.3. So as you can see, we're not really reaching that number yet. Algebra, not so much. Earth science, not so much. Studio R, not so much. Entrepreneurship, 17.6, that's more than double the students that are coming away with credits. And that 17.6% of 8.4% of our black African-American students will be getting an entrepreneurship credit. It's the same thing with orchestra. So this might not seem like a lot, but it's a start, and that's a start that I am very happy with. I'll just give you a minute to take a look at these numbers.
Can you go back to the previous?
Sure. So what I should, I should share with you is, so entrepreneurship, a new class for credit. Symphonic band, a new credit. Orchestra, new credit. Chorus, new credit. So we have added quite a few classes.
What do they do for entrepreneurship?
Entrepreneurship is our food truck.
Oh, okay.
Program, okay? It's, it's a branch off of facts. And this 290, that's not including our foreign language credits. So our students will get foreign language credit too, as long as they pass that exam.
Now, the accelerated math, is that a?
That's not a credit.
That's not a credit though?
That's not, that number is not included in that.
All right.
It's totally separate.
And just a quick question, if there, if a child is not in accelerated math in seventh grade, they can, I'm assuming they can still get into algebra in eighth grade?
As far as I know, they can. I have not heard anything different.
So while we're on this slide, I just wanted to, if I can, I think it's great that we're starting to see courses that are allowing more students to matriculate in a way, and be, have those credits, but I, I think the long-term goal, and I'm sure it is for you too, is to make sure that there's proportionality in the accelerated math, algebra, earth science, because that's really what we're looking to do.
Yep.
And it's great that there is that opportunity to get a credit, but we're really hoping long-term, that that's where we see.
Absolutely. And then part of, part of the rest of the show here is the things that we are doing in our building to get that proportionality number up.
Wonderful.
Right, yeah, I would just echo what Mrs. Jordan said, and I, because the num, I mean, the numbers are pretty stark, so even though, you know, it's 11% for chamber orchestra, it's one kid.
I know, I know.
And, but I also, you know, I, when we think about accelerated math for seventh grade, it's not a course for credit, so I think we should, I mean, it's a course for credit, but not for high school credit. But I think that that's an opportunity to be able to open up accelerated math to more kids, and not just to the kids who may be algebra-eligible, but what about the kids who are like, kind of on the edge, maybe a little extra support? We could probably get them to algebra if they had the support in seventh grade. Do you know what I mean?
Yep.
So I, I think this is, it's, you need to disaggregate to be able to see where you are, and so I, I appreciate that, and we, you know, we have a direction to go in, for sure.
I think the really important thing here is that is, what gets measured is what gets changed.
Right.
And we haven't even been measuring these things in the past. So now we are looking at these, we've shone the light on it, we're looking at them, what gets measured is what gets changed. So now, so if five years ago, you asked us about what our, you know, our proportionality was in our, in our accelerated programs, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be looking at a chart like this, creating a chart like this.
Yes.
So I think that's the, you know, this is the start, is to, what gets measured is what gets changed.
Yeah, absolutely. You can't change it if you don't know it. But I also want to put, so things like orchestra, band, chorus, those don't just start in, in eighth grade, those are a trajectory. And so to have no kids of color in chorus in eighth, like, that started somewhere. And so, you know, the solution to that, or the way to address that, isn't just to look at eighth grade, and there's a whole.
Correct.
And a trajectory that starts in elementary school, too.
Well, and remember what I said, this is a K through 12.
Right, right. But we should, I mean, I, I know we have talked about this, it would be very interesting to me to look at demographics in elementary music, and then see how it moves through in, once we get to the middle school.
One thing, one thing that I, I was a little discouraged, because a student came to me, and I'll, I'll be transparent, you know, he was a black male student in eighth grade, and he came to me, and he said, "Ms. Fitz, I just want to drop, I just want to drop in, I don't want to be in it." And I said, "Why? Why do you want to drop?" And he said, "I don't know, I just, you know, I want to play sports, I want to do this, you know, I want to focus on something else." And I said to him, I said, "What you don't understand," and I did have a conversation with his mother as well, "So what you don't understand is, right now, you don't understand the whole credit situation. You really do want to get as many credits as you can while you are in middle school, because it will make your life a little easier. It can, you know, make your schedule flexible. It can give you the opportunity to take more classes that you want to take, once you get into the high school." So, you know, that's something that we also have to bring into our middle schools, and start younger, and have them understand what it takes to graduate from high school.
Are all those classes full credit? What ones are half-credit, which ones are full credits?
Algebra, full credit, earth science, full credit, entrepreneurship, half a credit, symphonic band, half a credit, orchestra, half a credit, voice, chorus, half credit. And I was looking at this today, originally I didn't have it in, but I wanted to share it with you, because, this is our state report card, and I know in our past, in my past presentations, especially in the summer, when we do the teaching and learning presentations, and we talk about, you know, the amount of students that opt out of their tests, their state tests. I was really happy to see this number. Last year, we had almost 800 students take that state exam, and that is quite the increase compared to the previous year, when we had, we had less than 50% taking sitting for the exam. So I was pretty happy with that. And, you know, although not great, they're not bad either. So this number right here, 45%, this is New York State's number, for people that have scored between a 3 and a 4. Bailey scored, we have 33% of our students that scored between 3 and 4. That's not that bad. The same thing over here with a 4. You know, we had 14% of our students that got a 4, and New York State had 17%. So I just wanted to share that little information with you. Suspensions. The blue is 2019, that was last year. Last year, we had about 185 students at this time last year, who had ISS. We had approximately 110, 115 students this year, actually it's 118 students who had incidences of suspensions. So we dropped quite a bit. OSS, not, ah. OSS was not as good, but I will tell you that the reason for our spike is really because of the situations that warranted the OSS. You know, I've got, I've got students that are hitting staff members, I have got students that are doing things that are pretty sexual. I've got students that, you know, are putting their hands in hurting other people, you know. I can't, we can't allow that to happen. Now, I will say, with the OSS, those students have always had the opportunity to, they've been given five days, if they do this, say, you know, write a letter, or attend a class, or various things, do, do some counseling, they can reduce that suspension, and they can come back earlier. I've had, I think I have had eight long-term suspensions, and they are included, they are included in the OSS. None of my students that have had long-term suspensions have completed the full amount, they've all been able to come back early. Okay, I am going to stop talking, and I'm going to turn it over to my restorative justice group. Ms. Coridia.
So moved. Still learning. So restorative justice is, which is going to help us to try to reduce those additions to suspension, as well as those for suspension. You know, it's there to help us to build relationships with the kids, the kids build relationships with the adults in the building and the community. Gives them an opportunity to, to process what actually happened, gives them an opportunity to say how they feel, and kind of get back into the community and make, make, make right with everyone that's been harmed, or who they've affected. We've had so far about 10, I would say about 12 pending, there's more pending on restorative conferences throughout, I believe since we started in September, yeah, about September, October, and it's been going pretty well. We had actually one conference that involved a parent, and the parent was very happy with the outcome. Again, our team is doing amazing work, and we have about 10 members, we have to meet you guys, and Lena, who was a part of the training as well. We have joint faculty meetings with Miller, they also have teachers and staff trained along with us, and collaborate with them ever so often, to kind of just exchange best practices of what's going on in the school, and how we can kind of like feed off each other, and maybe there's something they're doing that works, and something that we can pick up. So we've definitely collaborated with Miller and other resources to make sure that, you know, we stay on top of it. Well, this is not the entire team, but.
These are the ones we grabbed.
Yes, the last one to take this photo. And they're very enthusiastic about, you know, the conferences. Usually I send out an email with an issue, would like to participate, and volunteer to do this conference, and they all jump on it. Sometimes they get into arguments about who's going to do it, and that's how excited they are about it. So I don't know if you can see this, it's kind of tiny, but if, if you're on your laptops or whatever, you can see this is an agreement form, in which every participant signs the form. This gives us an idea of what happens. So we try to track our conferences, and so we can go back and look at, you know, if the incident happens again, or something happens, maybe we can say, "Hey, Joey, you agreed that this won't happen." And so we hold them accountable, the students kind of, you know, look back at it and say, "You know what, I did agree to this." Then we come up with other strategies and agreements if we need to. But I think it's great for them to be able to go back, if there's another incident, and look at the sheet and say, "You know what, I did agree to this. This was, this is what the issue was, and this is how I reacted, and this is what I agreed upon to do." Most of our students that have participated in the conference are not repeat offenders. I would say majority of our conferences have been fifth graders, you know, they're, they're young, and they're still trying to figure out the whole middle school stuff, but it's mostly have been fifth graders. I think it's a great way to get them started.
So, so, sorry, sorry, Shelley. So one thing that I want to talk about real quick is, you know, there's restorative circles, and there's restorative conferences. Restorative circles are happening all the time in the classrooms. You know, when a teacher is feeling like, you know, the community is just not there in the classroom, they're going to create a circle. They may have one of the, one of our trainers come in and work with the, the entire class with the teacher. So I just want to make sure that you know that there's a difference between a restorative circle and a restorative conference. So the restorative conference is when there is harm that has been caused. Once the, once the form has been filled out, and everything has taken place, then we go, and then Shelley goes in and she does a survey with all of the kids, and these are some of the results that we have had so far. Shelley?
So move, again, after they're finished with the process, they fill out a survey to kind of give us an idea of how they felt about it, if they felt that it was successful, if it helped them, if they would recommend it to, to a friend, and just kind of get a feel for if we're doing the right thing, and how they feel about it. Again, so so many questions, we could ask, it's a safe, supportive, respectful space for my thoughts, you know. A lot of the kids strongly agreed, agreed, and then we had some mutual.
These are, so these results are from kids?
Yes, they're from kids. I would say one was from a parent, from that one parent who had participated.
Okay, but do you have, it'd be interesting to see these data by like, the person who was harmed, and the person who did the harming. Do you have to split up that one?
No, you're absolutely right.
What?
I said you're absolutely right. That would be a good way to kind of.
Yeah, because, because I'm sure people have different perspectives on a conference.
No, absolutely. But most of them I would say are positive, both harmed and the person that caused the harm. Again, questions was a facilitative, facilitative, nonjudgmental, again, they were just able to answer a few questions, to give us an idea, if we needed to change anything, add anything.
I'm just going to go through these, so you don't have to. These are some of the responses, faith in our practices of improving the whole student. I have noticed that students participating in Quinn Amsterdam, and she is demonstrating respectful behavior, and things have gotten better.
And it says "got better" because we don't change any, so whatever's on there. And it says got better because we don't change any, so whatever is on there, that's a response that's what we're finding out. So we have to work with that student.
All right, PBIS. Um, for the last, it started last year, but we now have student ambassadors and we probably have about thirty student ambassadors, um, in the grade six and seven. What they do is they're in charge of spreading positivity throughout our building. They're in, they are actually, um, in charge of when our L students come in, they're new to the school, they are actually pairing up the L students with, um, with one of the ambassadors to make them feel comfortable and just get them to, to understand the way the land at Bailey. Uh, we also have the check-in and checkout program. It, when a student is paired up with an adult in our building, um, the teacher provides feedback to the student. Um, they help them, uh, give, you know, give them suggestions, talk to them, help hopefully improve their student behavior, help hopefully increase their, you know, study skills, being able to participate in the classroom. And one of the other things is this check-in, checkout pro- uh, program because the, the, um, facilitator does work with the parent as well. So there is a stronger, um, home-school connection. A typical student profile, um, for a student who would go into the check-in or be recommended for the check-in, checkout program is for students who have struggled with tier-one goals, behavior problems, um, they're not getting any work done in the classroom, um, they're not doing their homework, they don't participate, they don't have, they can't focus, they don't have any time management, and they struggle emotionally with focusing, um, social awkwardness, not knowing how to make friends. And believe it or not, we actually, the kids are only on the check-in, check, in the check-in, checkout program for ten weeks and we actually have kids that come off of it and say, can I go back on it because it really has helped me?
How many students are in the check-in, checkout?
So currently there is until last quarter, we do a quarterly, so last quarter I believe there was around twenty-four students. This quarter, um, there is, there's less. The eighth graders, you know, they're, they're grown and no one can tell them what to do. So they're having a hard time adjusting to the program, but we do have a few.
So the next thing is the culturally responsive education. So with that, um, thanking to Beth, John, Dr. Catalino, um, Alex, uh, Dr. Alex Petersen has been working with both of the middle schools um, to bring that cultural awareness to us. And I am going to let our, um, Mrs. Barnhart vote to you on that.
All right, so the committee so far consists of fifteen educators. Uh, we are a diverse makeup. Uh, as so far, Dr. Petersen has provided us with some literature to read to come, become more aware of where maybe our biases that we're not aware of are coming into play when we're dealing with our students on a daily basis and really looking at, um, and holding us accountable for our perspective on things and where that falls. So we've been focusing on four elements which are, um, awareness, ac- um, awareness, acting, accountability and I just forgot the other one. I had it before I talked to you guys. Um, it'll come to me after I walk out the door. So that's what we've been focusing on and our goal is as we become more aware of our dynamics and how that's impacting our students in the classroom and in the building is trying to make things more culturally aware and sensitive in the building and hopefully close that gap over time.
Um, one of the other pieces that we're doing, you know, I know the high school has done it. Um, Miller did a small, um, book study as well, So You Want to Talk About Race. I know that you all have done it. Um, Bailey act, actually asked if they can do it. So Charlotte Adamus, our librarian, she has been doing the book study, So You Want to Talk About Race and it appears approximately twenty people, um, enrolled in. And what we're doing with Dr. Petersen is that we are having joint faculty meetings. Um, we're doing, uh, joint PLC groups. So both middle schools are coming together to work together. We, um, I know Bailey, we are going to be, um, my team for the CRE. They are actually going to, uh, explain and talk to the faculty, uh, next Thursday during the faculty meeting just to talk about what is happening in the PLCs. And we're also going to give, um, the teachers time to share lessons for our culturally responsive education. And that's really what teachers want. They want time in order to be able to do this. They are all very excited about learning it and in having it in the classrooms and being aware of it. They just want to have time to be able to embrace it and understand it and learn from it. So we're giving them as much as we possibly can. This is a small group of, uh, my, uh, CRE team. There are, uh, many that are still, uh, absent. So I just, I missed a slide after I skipped a bunch of them, but one of them is resilience. I just wanted to talk really quick about resilience. I know, I know every school was showing the resilience film. We showed ours just a couple of weeks ago. Um, Suzanne, thank you very much for coming. Dr. Shaughnessy, thank you very much, or Mr. Shaughnessy, thank you very much for coming. Um, we had nineteen families come to the show and my teachers really did put on a very nice spread, you know. We wanted to make sure that, you know, we got as many parents as we possibly could. And many times the big issue is, well, I don't have childcare, I don't have anything to, you know, for my kids. So really we had students come from the high school. They came down to help babysit little kids. We had, um, some of our students come in and work with like the younger kids. And we had all kinds of food. We had a lot of thought and a lot of planning went into it and, you know, unfortunately we did only have nineteen people show up. But, you know, up, it's nineteen people that got to hear the message and hopefully that just continues to spread the community. Um, and now, I, I don't want to leave him out.
Didn't have a slide.
He's got, he's got some great words here.
So we had, uh, as you know, starting in the middle of December, um, has its challenges. But I have to say, working with Ms. Fitzgerald and Ms. Redd, we really do have here at Bailey a systems approach to learning. And as one of the lead learners in the building, it's been nice to see that that systems approach isn't just, um, for our students who are struggling with PBIS and RTI. Myself and Ms. Redd, I'm working with primarily sixth and seventh grade students. She works with fifth and eighth. We had child study meetings, meetings once a week. And we're really getting into these conversations, not just socially, academically, but you saw some of the slides where it's still a growth set model with us and the students really have an opportunity to grow with those electives, those on-world classes that they're taking. And so we hear some of the concerns with getting more diverse and more students involved in that. And so that's one thing I know we're going to talk about, how to support all of our learners. But the one thing you need to know is coming in new, is we have a pretty solid system in place. And that's really encouraging for me coming in as a learner, seeing all this taken in, coming to Ms. Fitzgerald and saying, what about this, we tried that, oh, we're doing this, this is where this is, this is where that is. So it's really been really inspirational coming into a district as large as Kingston and a middle school as large as ours to see that even coming from a smaller school, those things are really in place here. And some of the course offerings that I know that were not in my building because we just did not have the staff. So that's very important, that you should know that. So it's very encouraging for us.
I did not tell him to say that. Questions?
I don't really have a question. I just want to say I did spend, uh, uh, most of the day at Bailey in the fifth, sixth grade wing and I was, um, visiting the language and reading classes. And, um, just the atmosphere was just very warm, very, the, every, every teacher, every aide was very, very focused on, uh, meeting the needs of all their students. And I came back and saw a math presentation in one of the other classrooms and I'm just really gratified to see how many really dedicated professionals we have working in the building. And the atmosphere was just very, very welcoming and secure at the same time. So I really appreciate it.
I think it's very, uh, rewarding, uh, for me on the board and I'm sure for my colleagues to see the adoption of these student-centered initiatives. You know, not only at Bailey, but we had the same thing last presentation from Miller. Um, you know, and these things take time to, uh, become effective and they will grow as the years go by and so.
I couldn't agree with you more. You know, one thing that I do want to stress is that, you know, it's not just Bailey, it's not just Miller. It's middles, the middle schools and we really do work as a team. You know, Andy, Tim and Tamara, you know, I know Tamara is new, but we are on the phone with each other constantly. You know, they're asking, you know, for our input, we're calling and asking for their input just to make sure that we are all on the same page. You know, even as far as a suspension, you know, Andy, you know, I've got this student who did this, what would you do? Tim will call and say, hey, Deb, you know, um, this situation happened, what do you think? How do you, how would you handle it? So there really is that collaboration between, between both buildings. And it, and it really is a nice feeling. Nora, so.
I have a couple of questions, but the first one is, um, looking at the course offerings.
Yes.
And this is wonderful. I, I said to, um, Mr. Schaber, why don't we do this before and offer more, uh, high school credit? Uh, because I think it'll go a long way to getting kids into the, some of the AP and others places once they get more of the kids in, into them, once they get to the high school. But, um, are you going to evaluate, um, the courses that were offered? Maybe change some of them? Perhaps, I know you're working together with the other middle school, but, um, the ones that really don't seem to be drawing.
Am I going to change like, um, well, I will tell you this. I'll answer it, I'll answer it this way. We're not going to take away those classes. We're going to keep those classes and make sure that, you know, there's still credit. But what we are going to change is we're going to change what is being taught in that class to an extent. So for instance, I'm just thinking of, I'm giving a course, okay? You know, let's get some gospel music in there. Let's get, um, some, you know, some band music, let's do studio art. You know, I think, I don't think we have any, um, minorities in there. Let's get, you know, a project going on where Ev, you know, all of our students can participate in, you know, our subgroups. So, so I'm going to change getting the interest so we have more students wanting to be in those classes. Does that make sense?
Both middle schools will.
Both middle schools, yes.
To make the courses more attractive to more students.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you know, the other thing, the other thing is, you know, and, and, you know, we're still trying, we still want to put more classes with credits available to them. We want that.
And last, and a question, if you don't forgive, it's a good move for an analyzing floor. Um, what's the rationale between splitting the, uh, vice principals, that vice assistant principals and having them do five, eight, and six, seven instead of five, six, and seven, eight?
Because, you know, what, I took it from the high school. So Shelley will start with the fifth graders and she will follow them until they're in eighth grade. So to make sure that they stay on the path. She knows those students by the time they come, become eighth graders. It's the same with Andy. You know, I want, I want relationships built, you know, with guidance counselors to follow the students. I want the APs that follow the students to, to build those relationships because principals are.
Okay, so, so one, um, the assistant or vice, vice principals will always have five and eight?
So I have five and eight because my eighth grader is last year graduated. So my seventh graders became my eighth grader. And so I have to.
So you'll always, so somebody, one of you will always have five and eight?
Yeah, she's rounding the phone.
No.
You're looping.
So I have six and seven, so next year I'll have seven and eight, the year after I'll have eight and fifth, fifth grade.
Right, so someone will always have five and eight.
I got it.
Yeah, looping.
Just curious.
It works, it works in the high school, it really does. And, you know, middle schools, the kids are so fragile and confused. You know, if you have somebody there that they can trust.
I agree.
It just must be an interesting experience to have eighth and fifth.
Yeah, it really is. And when I look at my, you know, my, my steps, yes.
You know, we kept going back and forth at the end of the, end of the school year last year. Are we going to, you know, somebody going to just continue with, you know, just five and six and seven and eight? But I opted to follow this model instead.
I think it works because my seventh grader is last year, then my eighth grader is going to be, I have relationships with them. All the kids will be similarly that way, so they're, they're comfortable.
So by the time they get into eighth grade, uh, is there any, so is always going to be, is it always going to be eight, an eighth grader and a fifth grader? Or, you know, it won't work out then. Is there, is there a possibility for any mentorship between an eighth grader and a fifth grader?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're actually in the works with that. That probably won't happen until next year, but we're definitely, we want to do something like that with our student ambassadors, our older student ambassadors. We'll be mentoring with our, with our fifth graders.
Principal Fitzgerald, I was just, I was just glad you addressed that, that issue of the numbers of African-Americans and, and children in general, children of color in general in, in certain courses. Because inside of the board committees, we, we, we dig deep into the numbers, these numbers. But it always comes out that your numbers become the basis for the culture of your school. So if your numbers are saying, um, that you have no, um, African-Americans or children of color in, in, inside of chorus, it may be ending there or beginning there, but it's part of a larger pattern that goes through the whole
Absolutely.
school system which, which needs to be addressed. I was glad that, that you spoke on that and, and that concern. And I wanted to ask because we know, you, you said we might want to change it up to gospel to make it more attractive.
And I just use that as an example, you know.
But that's fine to, to, to more students because we know a good deal of these African-American students on Sunday are all in their church choirs, but they're not in yours.
Right.
Or, or, or district-wide.
Right.
So I, I wanted to know, is it a cultural, like all of our friends are in choir and certain kids are not, or is it recruitment? Do, do we have recruitment challenges to get children into certain, uh, classes? Because I, I, I know even in certain other classes like accelerated math, it was always recruitment. We needed to talk to children to say, you want to be in this class? And then like you said, I called their mothers.
Yes.
And I said, you need to have them in, in this class. So your child is about to drop, drop orchestra, I'm not going to let that happen.
Correct.
That, that's also very important, recruitment and, and retention.
Yep.
To, to, to actually do take affirmative steps, like calling mom and dad.
Yes.
And saying, no, the fiddle stays.
Yes. The bottom line is it's all about, it's all about educating, really. It's educating, you know, the students that don't understand it and it's educating the parents that don't understand it.
So what kind of outreach is being done at the school level? And you probably could answer for what's happening at Miller.
What kind of outreach is being done so that the students know what's available and what's entailed in the coursework? And what the advantages of actually getting credits, like you were saying, have a conversation with the.
And that's what it is, it's having conversations, it's, you know, it's.
Presentations, you know, do, do presentations for the grade level.
Oh, yeah, we have, we have our assemblies, actually, we're getting ready to do our assemblies, especially for the eighth graders. And we will be doing it for the seventh graders to prepare them for eighth grade. So when they start doing their, their, um, course selections, we're going to be talking about, you know, you want to do this, you want to do that.
But, but a child that drops band in fifth grade isn't going to pick up band in eighth grade.
Correct.
So I think, yes, outreach to parents is important and recruitment is important. But, and you said this, Ms. Fitzgerald, that kind of shaping the curriculum to make it attractive is important. But I also hope that we'll ask kids what would make them stay.
I guess that, all the time.
Okay, so then that can be part of.
Yes.
I mean, in some, I know that the band teachers, I mean, they try to be flexible, it's hard to get tier lessons, they have them after school. Sometimes they have them before school, maybe kids don't know that. I don't know, but I would hope, I, I think we need to ask kids what they want, what would make them stay early. Um, and I think that the curriculum needs to be focused on, on, you know, reaching a diverse group of kids.
And we just know all of this is by the. And we just know all of this is, is badly important because children who are interested in all of these other types of activities happens, their attendance goes up and, and their, their participation and their, uh, connection to school becomes stronger by being involved in, in all of these other, not only just courses, but clicks.
Yes.
All my new friends, you know.
You know, as Dr. Palomino said, you know, these numbers have, they've been, they've raised questions to us, they've given us ideas, you know, we have these numbers, now the excitement starts where we can start making a difference.
How many eighth graders are there totally?
Um.
In your building?
Roughly, probably about two hundred and sixty.
And you're telling me there's only thirty-two kids in chorus, in eighth grade chorus?
In eighth.
That's alarming to me.
For eighth grade.
That, that's, that's a, that's a death sentence for a high school program.
No, 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 no. That's for credit.
Credit.
But don't all kids that are in the eighth grade chorus get credit?
No, no, no.
So there are two chorus classes?
Because you have to be able to, you have to, if you want to get credit, you have to do certain things, and also, um, the chorus, it's seventh and eighth grade, so it's, it's a mix.
It's a big group, because I've seen.
Oh, it's very big. And, um, Mr. Schrader and, um, Ms. Kimberly, they do an amazing job, the kids, they go to.
Just to say, your initiative is vital, it's, and, and it's long-lasting, and it's, like you, you said already, part of a large, a larger program from K to twelve.
It's exciting.
So, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Clapper, who's going to give us our KHS Second Century Report and whatever else he'd like to talk to us about.
Before I start, I, I just want to say that we've, uh, we've been having a little bit of a challenge in my department with a few guys out, we have a few guys on Workman's Comp, and the flu has hurt us a little bit, and I really appreciate the efforts of the folks that are still working, uh, when, just not picking one person over another, but Nick Bishop is not only doing small engines, he's doing a whole fleet of fifty-three cars, he's helping out making deliveries, our electricians are doing plumbing work, and we, we are doing, I'm very proud of my guys, they're doing a great, great job around the district. So this is, uh, this is the basement floor of Maine, we're down to getting ductwork tied in and air conditioning, this is at the nurses station, uh, we, uh, the nurses station last week, or last time I was presenting, was just a raw room, uh, the, the sheetrock is going up, the door jams are set, uh, ductwork is going in, uh, we're at the point of the project, we have sixty-three people on the project right now, working, and we're, we're, we've started to shrink the project, it's like a funnel, right, you start out with everything and you get down, and now everybody's in the same spaces, just pulling up, getting down, and so, uh, we're, we're on schedule, I feel very comfortable about Easter break turning over what we're going to turn over, we have a monumental task inside, internal task, we have to get everything out of Tobin and whatever we're going to keep, we've got to put it in the building, we're not turning over the entire building, so I have a storage of desk chairs, whatnot, to, uh, to figure out where we're going, we've been working, a few slides down, we'll, we'll be talking about the art and, uh, department and the, uh, the folks that are over in Tobin. Uh, this is, uh, the downstairs on the Tobin side, this was an, an art class, uh, there, there, these three, the two classes on that side, which was a, I believe, a computer art class and a regular art class, and the custodial area was not going to be turned over for Easter break, it's going to be turned over at the end of the year, which gave us a little bit of an issue with getting to the new nurses station, so we, we've made an initiative for these, and opened up this area for these guys, and in two short weeks, they've done a lot of work in those three rooms, and those rooms will also be turned over at Easter break, so this is all new work in that area. Uh, we're, this is in, on the basement floor again, we started at the second floor, come to the first floor, we're down on the first floor, primer paint, plumbing's all roughed in, moving right along. This is all the casework, parts and pieces are sitting on site, just waiting for the rooms to get done, stu-, uh, teachers' desks, cabinets in the room for the, for the classrooms, the classrooms are pretty much looking, kind of look like the ones that are in Salzman. This is a completed room on the second floor as far as the, the casework, uh, obviously there's still going to be touch-up painting, there's electrical work going on, if you can see the, the stripe, that is a piece of, uh, wire mold that goes down to the computer connection at the bottom, and that, that wiring is ongoing. This is the terrazzo floor, and I, the picture does not do it justice, so they, they patched, there was cracks everywhere, and so the original thought was that we're just going to open up that crack an inch or two, fix it, and try to smooth it all over, and we realized that it would be very difficult to match a hundred-year-old terrazzo, so what, what they, what they did was, is they made stripes across it, and it's very difficult to see, but there's, there's a seam there and a seam there, so instead of having a little strip, it's like, it, it almost looks like we have a pattern now on the floor, and when they started to do that, they realized that we, they needed to sand the whole floor, so this is the original part that he hasn't sanded yet, and this is the rest, and when it's done, it's completely lined up, it's, it's a really, it's going to be a good product, and that's, that's the other sheet, this guy, he had to take, he was sanding for like three hours up there and he just walked away from that sheet, because, and that's tough, tough work, but, but as you can see, they're sanding the entire floor, this is the second floor, all the terrazzo. Last, a couple of weeks ago, I showed you just, uh, racks with no wires in it, the wires are coming up, most of these wires, we, we're, we're in this like crossover position, because we have servers that are still active in the school, which is all the wires that are around the rack, and all the new wires on the rack for the new server, so it kind of looks a little confusing there, but a lot of that, uh, comes out before the end of the project. Uh, this is the second floor bathroom, completely tiled, ready for fixtures, the, um, the epoxy floor is going down, uh, starting next week, and that'll start on second floor and move its way down, the, all the tile's done on the second floor, it's probably be done tomorrow on the first floor, and then we'll be moving into the bathrooms in the basement. Uh, this is John and, uh, Ms. Ernie, I believe her name's Amy, uh, she's an art teacher, and this is what I was talking about, we've started, we've already moved a couple of truckloads of their stuff out that, that, that they don't need for, they're in interim class spaces for a while, and then a year from now, they go into their permanent class, so we've been working with them to pare things down, we've reclaimed some storage closets, uh, they're deciding what's to keep and what's not to keep, and there's been a lot of discussion about all this, because they like to keep everything.
There are teachers.
So this, this, this room had copy paper in it, it's on the third floor of, of East, Salzman East, and it was just piles of copy paper, we took it all out, we reorganized, we're putting shelves up, and this is where all the testing is going, uh, this is going to be the secure room for all the testing, it has to stay at the high school that rotates that. And my guys did that, uh, last week, they, they got all that stuff out there, they got all those shelves for them last week. In general, around the district, again, this is just a really short list, Janet Needham told me today that she made three hundred and seventy-six thousand copies in January, so that's just like her in the print shop, and we, I can't tell you how many things we've moved around the district, uh, every building's getting touched, and we're, we're doing a lot of work everywhere, and again, just a short list, I, I, again, I'm just really proud of my folks and the work they're getting done, we're quite shorthanded at this time, hopefully we get some guys back, and, and we'll all come again, and that's, uh, rhythm of what we're doing.
Tom, what, what does the Start Library Project mean?
Well, I, I actually probably, maybe you should have taken that, but, so, so, uh, but I guess we can talk about it. We, I was, uh, yesterday, I met with folks from Mid Hudson Federal Credit Union, uh, they are donating some with the approval of Dr. Palomino, and we're exploring a project at the library at George Washington, and so the folks from Headless Horsemen are, uh, they've, they've kind of gotten this whole group of folks together to, to do this project, so there's going to be this learning tray, because if you've ever been down to the Headless Horsemen, they have all these props and whatnot, so it's like a theatrical tray, that's a, a learning tray that kids are going to learn to read and everything underneath, we have to move the cabinets around, there's going to be a mural around the top, so yesterday, we talked about all of that, and what, what the needs were for them to do that work and how we're going to do it, but we need to get it through the board, so, so we, we, we came up with a scope of work, which the credit union is going to send me that letter, and it'll be for your approval next, next, uh.
That's very exciting.
Great.
And it is, it's very exciting, they're, they're, they're trying to become more community minded, and they've always have been, but now they're coming around to different school districts, they've been, done stuff with the municipality, and they're acting themselves, there's probably four or five people from the bank there.
Great, thank you.
Tom, first of all, the auditorium is wonderful, all right, and things look fabulous, when are we getting bathrooms near that?
Near, near the auditorium? Yeah, right now, the only two are in the music wing, though, the, the interesting part about the design of Maine, all the bathrooms are on one side.
One side.
So, so when we turn over that side, the bathrooms will be open, so we're turning the, turning that entire side over for September, is that, the actual turnover date is late in May, but it'll be ready for school in, in, in September.
All right, the other question, the, the library at GW, that's on the third floor.
On the top floor, yeah.
So, and there's no handicap accessibility to that floor?
No, no.
Like at Anna Devine, we moved classes, so that if you had a fifth grader, if you had a handicapped fifth grader, the fifth grade sessions moved downstairs, so that was kids could get around, what do we do with a kid who, who's handicapped?
I, I honestly can't answer that question, I, I don't know, I know that the library was down in the basement, and they moved it up maybe seven or eight years ago, because we, there's the, the whole children's house, and there's 40K down in that corner, and that's where the library was, and so we would have the same issue, whether, whether it's in the basement or on the third floor, the accessibility is the same issue.
Well, so you can go outside and come in, it, it's not ideal, but you can at least go outside and come in the, on a ramp.
Right, so, so accessibility might be an issue in some of our schools, but when, as, while we were talking through this project, we're going to have to make an accommodation somehow to have the classes run and, and do some of the work during that time, and the librarian said, well, we do a lot of work down on the stage, we bring books to the classroom, we just don't stay in the library anymore, so that's how they're accommodating that, would be my guess, I, I don't have a full answer for you, because I'm not on that side, I'm not on the edge of.
No, the building principal would be responsible for making arrangements within the building to make sure students with a disability get what they need.
Right.
But, you know, within the limits of some of our buildings because of their age and their lack of accessibility.
And, and it, and it sounded like they were accommodating, they, like I said, the librarians, they had these little, uh, like totes, and they, they had a full of books, and they were going out to classrooms, there, there are people, do come to them, but they go out to the classrooms, and, and just one other thing that I don't have, uh, the, every year we have projects, we have, I have two in the, in the, in the queue right now for this hundred thousand dollar capital out, like, it's very frustrating, we can't, we can't, it just doesn't seem like we're going to get anything accomplished again this summer, because we are trying to get a project together, get it through SD, get it through for wires, we're doing some abatement, and again, we tried to do little hanging fruit, so it's just a simple thing with one contractor, so we can get it done, and I, I honestly don't think there's enough time between that and to do it, we've been working on this since October, and so I, I, I wish we had another funding stream where we could give that to fifty, and so, uh, but we are, why I bring that up, because we are talking about what we're going to be doing this summer, and probably next month, I'll have to report a lot more looking at it.
Tobin is, um, is it going to be empty after spring break?
After spring break, there will be no more instruction in Tobin, and we're turning it over to the abatement contractor, because, and, and it is odd, and it, it took a lot of discussion and a lot of logistics to make that happen, and the reason being is that the two months in summer isn't long enough to do the abatement and get it down to a level that we can then have classes, we, we can't take the building down when students are in the west wing, it's too close, so it's got to get down to a level, I don't know what the level, the foot level is, but like, say, a ten-foot level by the time school starts, so to accomplish that and do all the abatement and get rid of all that, as this materials and everything, we need it to start so that in July, we actually start taking the building down.
And so that's both Tobin with.
Of all, the entire building.
The whole.
Yeah, I say Tobin, but it's that one.
Yeah.
Now, what is the insulation here?
So, uh, we, we've had some issues with heat here, maybe that person is, but we didn't test it, and, and the reason is, is that we, there were several designs on the heating system, and half the building didn't get touched, so everything on this side is original heat, and then everything over here was new heat, but we had a couple of redesigns on the heat, and when we did that, and we dropped the ceilings, there's, there's no, there was windows that go up above the drop ceiling, and we were losing heat through that space, so my, my, we've been working with train, I've been making adjustments, and I walked in here tonight, I realized that it was cold, even though I had it occupied, and I, well, I got a nice a lot on my phone now, and I raised the heat, probably, hopefully you get more comfortable in the last twenty minutes or so, uh, but what, what that is to do is to try to contain the air in the building. Uh, the interesting part about the building, because it was built in different stages, and somewhere along the line, there was a fire, I don't know when, but there's some chart, bar boards here and there, there's like three levels to the attic, so to insulate during the project was very difficult, and quite frankly, we just didn't have the finances to do that, so what we're doing now is we're closing up all that air infiltration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clapper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last thing on the superintendent's report would be, uh, Mr. Olson and Ms. Woodard, can they give us a quick update on where we are with our budget for next year?
So, we'll be, we'll be brief.
No.
Here's some of our, some of the data that we have at this point, uh, this one, the TRS rate is going to be nine point five three percent next year, that's our contribution to each teacher dollar that we spent, and that's a seven point six percent in the rate. Employees, uh, with, with what we call ERS, is fifteen point five percent of salary, so it's actually fair. Right now, we're estimating six point seven on health insurance, we have salary increases in the contracts, which as you know, are all settled, so the fed service, uh, we've already financed phase one, I'm sorry.
As far as the state's concerned, we are already beginning to pay for the bond payments for phase one, it's a seven, six million dollar bond that we took, for phase two, we are, um, we have, took a ban out in November, so we'll have a ban came in next year, in next year's budget, and possibly the next before we convert that to a ban, permanent financing on that. We've received governor's proposal on state aid, we'll, we'll share that with you in a minute, on a separate slide, also, we're also receiving this, uh, state aid includes building aid on the Second Century project for phase one, phase two, building aid for phase two, until we, the project, file, file support, so we will push off, um, permanent financing on that until, until the project's done, so we can match our aid with the, with the bond payments, so we reduce the taxpayer debt on that. And additionally, in the draft budget that we're working on, as we have in the past couple of years, we appro, we are appropriating two million dollars in appropriate bond balance from prior year.
So here's the state aid, uh, analysis that the governor's just referring to, the governor's proposals in the second column, and our, our budget last year is on the left, our draft budget is, uh, the third column, the variances, the yearly increases by category, so you can see foundation aid, where it's all stripped down, increase in foundation aid's one point three percent, there's some other increases there that are bigger, but the amounts are obviously tiny in comparison to foundation aid, so the entire, the entire year's state aid, right now, is only going up three point one percent, so.
Um, one thing I wanted to point out of interest is the executive budget proposal, if you saw the runs, if you looked at the, the current run for all different school districts, the top section of the run shows the current year aid, and the bottom section of the governor's proposal run shows the projected aid for next year, some of the categories look differently, and we can see in this, in this sheet that we have combined them in the bottom, because what they did, the governor's proposal, was roll them, roll those categories right into the foundation aid, so the increase includes some of the expense-driven aids, like OSIs and hardware and technology, and it's part of the governor's proposal to include those. and hardware and technology. And it's part of the governor's proposal to include those in there instead of having them separate out, which could be harmful to us, especially for the expense derivatives if your expense, expenses are increasing. Along with that, in the governor's proposal, having to do with that, there are, there are proposed aid caps. And one of the proposed aid caps, the governor's proposal, hopefully this won't occur, but that the total aid would be capped at the governor's proposal. Also, in, in addition to that, for the current year aid, the current year aid would be capped at the amount that's proposed, that's driven now. Now, one of the issues with that is that as the year goes on, aid adjustments are made on our expense and expenses that we have. One of the things that we're doing now is filing for high cost aid on BOSI students' full-time programs. And that portal to, to file for those aid plans, still continues on the federal. So, if they calculate it as the amount of the governor's proposal date, you know, that increase in aid, which could be several hundred thousand dollars, would be frozen. So, that's just a couple of things that are in the governor's proposal, having to pay, they will won't allow prior year adjustments. Oh, yeah, I, I'm sorry. So, you might wonder why our draft budget doesn't include the total amount that was in the governor's proposal. You can see that the building aid, there's about nine hundred thousand dollars that we are putting, putting, they're estimating less than the governor's proposal. They changed, this year, they changed how they're, you know, calculating that and not including projects, supposedly not including projects that have been approved but who haven't finished yet. But they did pick up, in our case, they picked up phase two. So, that seven point six million dollars in building aid estimate includes a half a year's aid for, what projected to be a half a year's aid on phase two of the project. We won't get that aid until the cost report and all contractors are good paid. So, that is misleading, that nine hundred thousand. Also, the expense driven aids, we aren't always certain that we're going to get all of those aid. For example, transportation aid is a little bit higher. And so, that will change throughout the year and it's not a given. So, that's why our draft budget is about a million three or a million two less than the executive budget.
Obviously, the state would like to freeze things, so it makes it easier for them to predict how much they have to spend. But, you can hurt a district like us, us, like ours, sorry, where we have, you know, specialized costs and other costs that are moving around a lot and looking in upward direction. We might have no recourse, which is special to cover any of that.
A couple of other just minor things I'd like to point out from the governor's proposal. Executive budget places cap on growth of transportation aid, starting in twenty-one point two. Transportation aid, if your expenses, if your expenses are increasing, your aid would, would be increasing, you know, less than. Another, one of the other issues here, or points here on the governor's proposal, which actually started this past year, it happens to be a STAR, changes on STAR exemption. Beginning this year, typically, anyone who had a STAR exemption is traditionally off, an exemption off of your total bill. And then, from two fifteen on, you would get a check from the state rather than getting the exemption off of your, your bill. So, the cap became hundred thousand to be eligible for basic STAR. And last year, they implemented if your income was over two hundred fifty thousand and you were previously getting a basic STAR, you would not get it off your taxable anymore. You would get a check from the governor, a check from the state. So, in this upcoming, next year's budget, they're reducing that to two hundred thousand. So, if your income is over two hundred thousand and you're currently getting STAR off of your bill, you won't get it off your bill anymore. You'll get a check from the state. Those, those STAR, they're not exemptions, they're credits. The STAR credits from the state are subject to a two percent increase every year. STAR exemptions that you get on your bill, if you do not choose to get a check from the state instead, are frozen and they haven't been for the last couple of years. So, your STAR exemption is frozen if you're getting it off your bill. So, those are just a couple of others, you know, something else that that will happen.
Just about nothing is as arcane as New York State education aid. So, our tax levy calculation, which is an annual exercise that we go through, by we, I mean Beth and Ann, most, in the form of, this year, the bottom line of that is a very modest one point seven two percent, as you can see on the, I don't think it's supposed that far. But tired of last year, last year, mayor call was one point four or five percent, but still a pretty low number.
Yeah. Okay, this is our preliminary tax levy calculation. The factors that go into it are the prior year exemptions. As you can see, we carry forward the pilots from the prior year as an addition to the, to tax, the base levy. And then, we have to take off the pilots for the coming year. There was an increase of about four hundred thousand in the pilots for the coming year. So, that comes off of the tax, the base levy, but we're actually going to be getting those funds as other revenue. Also, with the new change in the BOSEs, helping the BOSE capital levy, we're gonna have to adjust this. As soon as we receive the information for BOSEs that we need to incorporate it into this on the prior year, as well as the projected year, we'll be redoing tax levy calculation and submitting that to OSA.
We don't necessarily expect that the levy limit is gonna change markedly from one seven to.
This year.
So, in our, in the budget that we're looking at right now, there are some rising costs and just wanna point out some of what they are. In the BOSE side, we've got three hundred thousand between administration, capital and instructional, two million in alternate, special and alternative aid, a couple hundred thousand in pocket. So, about two and a half million right now is what we're looking at for an increase to BOSEs. Now, BOSE's bill, by the way, is upwards of seventeen million dollars right now. ERS and ERS, about six fifteen. You can see transportation, health insurance, salary expense. This is a, this is a large increase for transportation, vis a vis what we have seen in the last number of years. There's a lot going on in transportation. As you, as you may know, there's a lot of foster kids being transported, homeless kids being transported. It's a lot of new routes that we've had to initiate and has caused some havoc in the transportation area. And the cost is simply going higher.
And some of those happen in the middle of the year, right? So, that would make sense to cap transportation aid at what the governor's proposal said, considering we don't know where these students are coming from, where our increase in our transportation costs will come at any time during the year.
I'll make that maybe, that's the governor.
We'll talk to Kevin about that on Friday.
I have another associated cost along with the special ed loss, the special alternative aid is the governor's proposal. And we did receive a bill today. We currently are required to pay thirty-eight point forty-two percent of maintenance costs of certain students in residential placements. The governor's proposal projected is proposing to increase that to fifty-six point eight. Which in our budget right now is a pretty big allocation and this will be not included here because this is, we might have, we might have to tell them.
Yeah, I mean, it's incredible what, what some of these residential placements charge, just the residential portion. Anyway, this, these items right here account for about ninety-eight percent of the total increase in our budget from last year to the one you'll see tonight. So, here's some, this one little chart about some growth in certain lines. So, the red line, the top line is health insurance. That's its track from, as you see, thirteen, fourteen to the, to our, to the budget that we're proposing. Special ed's track is pretty much parallel with it. And then, transportation, which is another one I chose, was sort of flat for three, three years or so. Now, it's been rising. It's a pretty big increase right here. In fact, the last year of that is like a thirteen point four percent increase. That's what we're projecting to ne, to next year for transportation. So, as you saw on the prior slide, cost is rising. So, this is the, the sheet that you've seen for the last number of years. So, the total appropriations in this budget right now are nine point one million dollars, nine point one million dollars higher than last, than the budget we're working with for this fiscal year. The estimated revenues thus far are up about four percent. Obviously, that's a mismatch. Again, your expenses going up by five, your revenue going up by four. You're not gonna get your balanced budget. And indeed, we don't have a balanced budget at this point, although it's early yet, but we are off of a balanced budget by four point three million dollars. So, we still haven't, obviously, heard the last from the legislature on state aid. We have not really heard anything solid from any of our healthcare providers. We're ethically, this is now based on, I suppose, hearsay in some fashion. So, there's things we don't know yet and things we hope will turn our way. But, that's a, that's a pretty big gap and Beth and I and Ann, Lee Shelby, have been working on it pretty steadily and we are going to balance this budget one way or another. Doc Peddly, you know any comments?
Like I always say, we're, we're looking at everything, going through the entire budget and work around the edges, see where we need to, if there are cuts we need to make. We see where our revenues are. I think the, our big concern right now is looking at these drivers that, that Mr. Olson and Ms. Woodard just showed us. Why, why are these expenses going up? What can we do about that? We've already started some, some of those, putting together some ideas and putting some things in place, but we're, we're just gonna chip away at it and we'll be back in a couple of weeks and give you where we are.
I guess the word also shouldn't be there. On the ballot, also, I am also on the ballot, is obviously the elected of three of your members. So, yeah, I'd just like to thank Beth Woodard, Dan Lee Shelby, and do any of you have any questions?
Last year's budget, didn't the, the governor's budget had caps on, on aid and they were taken off by the legislature? Am I remembering that correctly?
I think every year he tries to do, and fold the BOSE stuff in. I think that's a.
So, I think I'm the only person going up to Albany on.
No.
I'm going up Monday. Oh, okay. So, Mr. Lamb and I are going up to Albany on the, for the Capitol Conference Lobby Day on Monday. So, what should we be asking our legislators for in terms of goodies?
Money.
Money.
Money. Well, and the caps, obviously. And the building in a BOSE is just isn't functional.
Not always out there, but one of the things about it, we've always hit on, again, this was kind of going back to, on talking about our appropriations as opposed to our revenues. Our expenditures are going up because these mandates and these things that we've, like you see transportation, there's a huge increase in transportation because we're required to transport more students further, from further away with fewer regulations around it for what we can do. Like Mr. Olson said, you know, our homeless students, our foster students, that we have to transport into our district from wherever they are. So, these are, these are buses going there. And then, we look and say, oh, there's a bus driver shortage. Well, maybe. There's really a route overage, not a bus driver shortage. We have more buses on the road than we've ever had. And there are fewer students in many of those buses because they're going to faraway places to pick up one or two students who are, they're homeless or, you know, maybe they're foster students. So, that's why, so we could find some common sense around some of those regulations. And there's really, there's a lot of common sense in saying, let's cap the transportation aid, but they continue to provide these things at any given moment during the year. That's, there's just no logic to those, to that. Those are the types of things we would like to see the legislature look at as well. Because, you know, each, that, that, those appropriations, as that gets higher, the percentage is a percentage of a higher number, which is, you know, it's, there's a growth that's, that's not sustainable and a little out of control. So, we want, yes, revenues would be great, but, you know, I think it would help everyone if there was some common sense around, around mandates and around some of the laws that are being passed, we can reduce our, you know, expenditures. That's, that's a, I, I think that, that, I think that's actually a common sense way to look at it.
You may recall that, for example, for what Dr. Peddly was saying, we, we have to transport a homeless child who wants to be transported or a foster child up to fifty miles away. So, we have transported kids from Ellenville and River back and forth. Appreciate. And, and across the river. I think we were, we've been in Chippewa, which is not fifty miles, but we can go up to fifty miles. So, it's a long way and it makes for a long bus ride and a long day for a kid. But the parents sometimes choose that. They want the kid to remain in the, the school where they became homeless rather than enrolling down the end, another district. I mean, I can understand that, but I can also understand someone thinking like, wow, I don't want my kid on the bus two and a half hours a day.
But that's only for the remainder of that school year, correct? If they're homeless, it's just for the rest of.
It could be from September.
For that student.
Yes, for that student. It's just for that school year.
Yeah, but it almost happens in September.
Until they have, till they have sustainable housing, until they, they are, you know, in a, in a housing situation that is permanent or labeled permanent.
Yeah, so I think if it happened in May, you could continue with the law.
It continues.
Can I ask a question in terms of our homeless kids? Do we have any data about those kids that we're transporting for, for an hour, let's say, a day? How many of them come back and get sustainable housing in our school district? Like, do we, we have no idea.
How many students are we transporting in that category?
To be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not sure about that either. I think we transport quite a few homeless kids. A lot, most of them are more local than ones who are far away. But we're transporting from various motels around here, motels in Sorgedies. So, there's a lot of kids being transported, not so many from far, far away.
And do we have, if, if the destination is the same, they're being, they're being transported to their home school?
Yeah.
And so, there might be separate, separate buses from a particular location, one, one to each of several schools?
It could, it could be, here's an example, one place that homeless kids are sometimes housed is the Winton Hotel in Sorgedies, if some of you are aware of that, right on NW. And right, if there are elementary kids in that place and high school kids, you know, the bus schedules are quite different. So, there might be two runs from there.
And a bus run averages about forty thousand dollars per run.
More.
Well, those kids, you know, they, they need to get to school and I do understand that they want, that there's, needs to be some stability in, in their lives. And so, I understand why they'd wanna stay and then homeschool. But maybe there's a way to collaborate with, with the district that they actually live in or the BOSEs transportation that we already have circling through. I, I don't know if the timing works out for high school to, you know, mitigate some of those costs.
Haven't we had, like when kids go to special schools for the day, haven't we had where the home district might drive a route to the edge of that district and then we would pick them up?
We've had several different arrangements where we can.
And does it have to be a school bus if it's only a couple of kids? Can it be a car?
It doesn't, it, it, well, it could be a, it has to be a school bus, but a school bus doesn't mean giant yellow thing, you know. It could be a suburban, it could be, as long as it's a, as long as it's considered a school bus.
It has to be yellow?
It doesn't. I don't know if it has to be yellow.
It has to be certified as a school bus.
It says we certify as a school bus.
Monthly inspection.
That certainly is my strategy in this.
But there are a lot of small carriers that that's what they focus on. Ethan Allen really does mostly, some of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the very lengthy superintendent's report.
It took up an hour and a half.
Thank you. Before we move on to the Board of Education, I don't know when was a good time to announce it, but we did have a, a birthday in. it, but we did have a birthday in February, Dr. Peddino. So happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
He's getting younger.
Thirty-nine. Okay, so Board of Education, you have a running finance committee?
Yes. The committee met last Tuesday, January 28th, and we have received all the treasurer's claims auditors' reports, the final reports for the months of November and December, and we accepted those reports, of which are in our agenda, I'm sorry, we are to approve them as a board. We had some preliminary discussion about the budget, that's what we did that day, and I would thank Mr. Olson and Mrs. Woodard for the wonderful presentation. As you understand, there's so many assertic components that, you know, require us to finalize the budget, and we're still not ready to move ahead because of those uncertainties. Because I understand it's a great challenge for the business office and Dr. Paladino to finish the budget. So I would like to motion those two resolutions, the treasurer's report and the claims auditors' report, I can move them all in one? So, so move.
Are there any questions about either one?
Thank you for your work. Thank you for your work. He didn't do it.
So that's all I had to report.
Okay, so all in favor of accepting the transauditor's report and treasurer's report, PLE 44, PLE 45, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Staying announced. Okay, thank you for your report.
Policy.
The policy committee report.
This is just a follow-up to last week, or last time we met, the report that we had proposed to policy adoptions for federal fund purchasing policy and homeschool students. And I believe you've had time to review them after our first reading, so I would like to move. Whereas the Kingston City School District has contracted with NISBA as consultants to the Board of Education for the review, amendment, and adoption of its policy manual, and whereas a subcommittee of the board in consultation with NISBA and legal counsel have prepared the following policy for amendment and/or adoption, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education adopt the following amended policy, 6705, federal funds purchasing policy, and 1741, homeschool students. They've both been in your minutes, and if anybody has discussion? All right, I guess we need a second for...
The motion, second.
Second.
Second, motion and second. Any discussion, questions? All in favor of adopting the resolution, PLE 43, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Staying, you know, to adopt it.
And we will be meeting Friday morning at 9:30 for our next round.
Next item on the agenda, BOSI's, it's a new category. One of the goals of the BOSI's Board of Directors, or Board Goal, is that board members should make a periodic report of their component districts about what's going on at the BOSI's level. And so there's a BOSI's program report, I don't think it made it into the...
Yeah.
So that is, that is a report that's generated every month. I put together a, well, this was a presentation that was done by Gene, not what's his name, Gene Knudson, who was the director of the Mid Hudson Regional Information Center, and I found it very interesting, and it has to do with cybersecurity. And so if we can, there's nine slides, I can go through them very quickly, and I think we can go through the next slide, too. So cybersecurity, there's been a big increase in attacks on school districts in New York in 2019. In 2019, over the summer, there were 14 reported instances of ransomware that resulted in system encryption or corruption. Some of these, there was one district in Long Island that was attacked in the summer, and they paid a $500,000 ransomware, and they were not able to de-encrypt all of their files, and they had no recovery. There were several schools within the Mid Hudson Regional Information Center, I think it was Monroe Woodbury, had to actually delay school for a day this summer, they weren't able to open because they had been attacked. And there were also attacks, so the next slide lists some of those. Monroe Woodbury, Livingston Manor, and Chester were severely damaged, and some of them haven't recovered from them fully yet. And there were schools located in Orange Sullivan and Long Island Counties that were the focus of the attacks. And Gene reported on some state-of-the-art tools that the Mid Hudson Regional Information Center has started, has tested, which has been successful in dealing with some of the attacks, and that's on the next slide, I believe. There's a company called, well, first of all, they hosted a cybersecurity conference, they had 100 participants from 35 school districts. Mid Hudson Regional Information Center covers four counties, so there's four BOSI's that are involved, and I believe there's 47 school districts that are served by the Mid Hudson Regional Information Center. They've been working with a company called Checkpoint, which has developed a hardware solution, it's sort of a cipher that sits between the RIC hardware and the internet that identifies attacks coming into the, into the, into the RIC from outside. And the next slide is a case study of Port Jervis. I think we have to click through another one. So this happened sometime in the fall. A person was monitoring, noticed malicious activity at Port Jervis at 5:30 PM. The, Gene Knudson was notified at 5:45 PM. Staff arrived at Port Jervis at 5:55, and they brought down this device that, from Checkpoint, that they attached to the network, and almost instantly, they identified a single computer on the Port Jervis network, and they isolated it, and that eliminated the threat from that attack. The work that they've done so far, they haven't paid for, because they've been a development project with Checkpoint. That's about to end, and when they start, I guess, next year, or sometime in the near future, they will, there will be a $70,000 a year fee to have this device monitoring the network. But it really will be worthwhile, even eliminates even just one instance of an attack that either results in a ransom or a encryption of files on the server or, and causes school delays or, and ends up in an unrecoverable situation. So it's really a problem that is increasing, and, you know, not only in our, potentially in our elections and things like that, but also in our school districts. So I think that the Mid Hudson Regional Information Center is really being very proactive in dealing with the threat and staying state-of-the-art in terms of combating them. And so that was what the presentation of the, at the BOSI's meeting last Wednesday was. And that got me thinking also about if we can move on. So that was a thank you from Gene. The next slide, so I think everybody in this, so we've also had, we have, we have our own issues that we have to protect against with inside the Kingston City School District, information technology. So if you might recall about, so this was actually on Tuesday, January 21st, there was an email that went out to all employees that said, as part of ongoing efforts to maintain regulatory compliance, we've updated our password policy, and we need everyone to check their password we need. Please check here, please click here to do that, and check password. So if you check that password, it just went to a dummy screen, fortunately. And the next day, we got a report from Mr. Gary Thompson that that was a test. Ransomware, data leaks, and medical information data breaches are usually the result of phishing scams, called phishing scams. And emails are sent to people, try to get them to click on it and then enter their password, and that gives the attacker access into the, into the system. And sometimes they can, they can play a malware, piece of malware onto a computer that takes, that might sit idle for months and then it's activated. And so this was an update, this was a report to all of the users in the system, that the day before, there were 1,595 emails sent, 770 of them did not open the email, 825 people opened the email, 292 people clicked on the link.
I see your name on there, Jim.
Yes. After that, I was one of the people that clicked. That's why I knew there was a dummy screen. So everyone's vulnerable. I had a conversation with Gary, an email conversation with Gary. And so the next slide, if you look at the bottom, where it's, and I'll put this in the, in the library. Rectangular box at the bottom of that screen is what shows up at the bottom of your email if you go to click on a link. And this link goes to IP address 34.75.202.lol, which is not something in the Kingston City School District, KingstonCitySchools.org domain. So that's one way to look at a, an email and see if it's legitimate or not.
I'm assuming New Pulse has a pretty rigorous training program where they teach us what to look for and how to look for it, and so, you know, I'm not surprised that people, if you don't know, you don't know. So it's easy to be fooled by something like that. So when Gary sent us this email, I assumed that there'd be some kind of training program that would teach us exactly that, look for the, you know, hover over the links, see where the link's going, like, that kind of thing. So I'm hopeful that he'll roll something like that out, and that we'll all, even if it's a quick training, just to read a few emails.
Well, he did send a follow-up after that, explaining that from now on, anything that originated outside of the district would have that...
Right.
...attached to the email on the address, and then it's up to you to identify who the person is. So if someone who was communicating with you, like, from the college, and you wanted to click on it, go ahead.
Well, I don't know. I mean, this one, you've got to be careful, this is kind of the, and they give you, this training program that I went through gives you some really great tips on how to be careful in Kingston, but also on your home computer and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, I think maybe it would be a good idea if we could have a, develop a little video on how to, how to look for that kind of, because when you, if you see it on the video screen and you see what happens when you move your mouse across to a link and you can see what comes up on the screen, it didn't come up, it's hard to capture that. And it's also, but these could also come from inside as well, from emails that come from inside. But Gary did tell me that we have several levels of verification from every email that comes into the system. And he told me that on one particular day, well, actually, it was the day after this test was made, that there were over 12,000 emails that came into the system from outside the domain, 12,200, I'm sorry, 18,200. 6,000 of them were rejected before, they were not delivered to the intended recipient, and 12,200 were delivered. And yesterday, I think it was, we got the notice that there's a new, an additional level of security where any email that comes into the system from outside, from outside KingstonCitySchools.org will have this outside origination message, and that's from the last slide here.
And it also, I mean, in his letter to us, it says that there will be a cybersecurity, data security awareness as part of the annual training. So, you know, as long as we're getting trained on how to recognize it, that's good.
So I asked, so there's also some changes in ed law that are becoming effective in the next several months, and I asked Gary if he would be able, he would be willing to give us a report on that at some point after those become a little more settled. And I guess he will be working with the business department and teaching and learning on those applications. So since I wanted to give, I thought that this was worthwhile, getting into this at the same time as the cybersecurity efforts at BOSI's as well. It's just something we really have to be provisional for. A little stunned, I'll be more careful. And that's my report on BOSI so far. Unless there's any comments, anyone, anyone want to break any comments? Consent agenda? Any resolutions to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move.
Second. Are there any questions on any item in the consent agenda?
I don't have a question, I'd just like to congratulate the teachers who are responsible for continuing the Nobel Peace Laureates, and I hope they come and visit us after they return.
I think this is what, the fourth year?
Yeah. And Ms. Forrest...
She was here.
Forrest Bauer was here, but she had to...
Yeah.
If you have any questions you want me acting forward then to her.
I just want to hear from them when they come back.
Okay.
Yes, they need a chaplain. Yes, they need a chaplain.
I always say that, but they never do.
They never ask me. So, we also have a book on economics that's being adopted in the consent agenda, and a copy of it is here if anybody wants to look at it.
Donations.
We didn't vote on that consent agenda yet. It's in a hurry.
Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Yeah, absolutely. I think we have a, we don't have a.
Yes, there's one.
There is one.
There is one?
Kingston High School Athletic Department gratefully, the district gratefully accepts the donation from vast signs of removal of old scoreboards and installation of the new scoreboards at Chambers Elementary School Softball Complex.
New business? Mrs. Bauer?
Yes, I would like to move that the board meeting on April 1st be moved to April 2nd due to a conflict with BOSIS annual meeting and the students preparing dinner there.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. So, we have a conflict, Kingston City School District Board of Education meeting and the BOSIS annual meeting and the Austin County School Boards Association annual election. I guess it's the administrative budget for BOSIS.
Yeah.
And the Austin County School Boards Association annual meeting, election of officers, both on April 1st. So, if we could, and that April 1st date has gone out to all of the component school districts. So, if we please the board to attend the BOSIS meeting on April 1st, if we could move the Kingston Board meeting to April 2nd, we could accommodate that.
The motion is second, so.
It has been, we did do a motion in the second, right? So, that's just the discussion of it, the reason for it.
I cannot attend the second, but that's.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Herb, for a lot of closing. Okay, so that we should announce. We have some correspondence that came in. We have a letter from Ron Woods with a request to name the renovated high school tennis court to be named after Bob Cook, who won the Austin County Singles Title nine times, sectional champion at Kingston High School, college player, and a well-liked principal at Roundhead Valley who died, I think, a year ago, at age 43. So, he would like us to do that. What I would suggest, my suggestion is that we send this to the Policy Committee. Any naming of a, a school district facility has to be done by the board, but I think we should take a moment to take, at least a meeting to get feedback from other parties in the district as to whether they agree with us, because I want you to name a facility its name.
We don't have any policy regarding to that.
Well, I mean, no, it is, it isn't a policy that any, any name, any facility name has to be done by the board. So, I mean, we could.
The Policy Committee will be happy to do the.
So, there is no criteria. My question would be any criteria in choosing a name?
Well, we'll be happy, we're a representative group, so we'll try to make a recommendation based on any information we think we need to get first. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Very good.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we need, we don't need a, so there's no resolution on that. So, that's just a task that you can take on. We also have the Austin County School Boards Association Distinguished Friends of Education. Normally, we do this sometimes sort of secret typically, but there's been a, neither.
We have committees in the.
We have a committee.
Yeah.
So, we could do.
But what?
You're in charge, right?
Not really.
I thought we already decided.
It's not, it's.
Well, there was a name that was.
Right.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember his name, but I know who I need.
But we, so if that's the name, we did discuss that, if that's the name, we decided we can just send it.
So, it should be a surprise.
It should be a surprise. We could send it to the, to. The person. Austin County Support Association by the.
Right, so they get the letter and doing here on TV.
Right.
Because they know they're watching.
Okay, so.
We're in the Freeman.
That would be our nomination?
We're in the Freeman.
That would be our nominee?
Yeah, I think that's nice.
That's fine with me, I think.
Motion?
Make a motion.
So, move.
Okay.
It's not you, Kim, but.
We have a letter from, it's a someone in Cahill, his annual letter to the school board, or actually, it's just to Dr. Catalino, seeing him tomorrow or.
Friday.
Friday. Thursday, we have Mid Hudson School Study Council Awards for Teacher Excellence and Educational Leadership Award for their meeting, I think it's May 7th. Nominations have to arrive by April 1st. So, if we want to nominate anybody, how do we normally do that? Do we do it at the board level or?
No.
We've never done it.
We've never done it.
Many years ago, we did. I mean, there have been awards that.
Not since I've been here, have we?
No, it's not well researched.
Yeah, it's a long trip down to Campy's Pier. And there's an opioid epidemic workshop by Utica National. The one closest to us is March 16th, KIPSY, from 8:30 to noon, I believe, if anyone would like to go. I don't think there's a fee for it. It's in the, the flyer was in the board library.
You just, Camille, now, if you'd like to go?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, does it say?
I think there's a fee.
I don't think there's a fee, but I think there is a registration, maybe. Yes, if you have questions or need assistance registering, Camille would accept that responsibility, contact Camille. And I don't think I have any other new business.
He's a sign.
Board member announcements?
Do you want to talk about the Jefferson Committee?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we met for a Jefferson Committee meeting yesterday. Wasn't much to it. They, they, there was no agenda. It was sort of informal. I guess the next meeting will be more formal. They talked about parking.
Signage being a problem.
Signage at various parking lots for both teachers and students.
It didn't seem to fall into a category that would require the code of conduct being changed. So, I think it was like a.
They said it would be administrative, yeah.
And that and trespassing was the other thing that I guess is already covered. So, they're not going to make any recommendations to change it. That was my opinion.
That was it.
And so, they had, but they do have another meeting scheduled?
First Tuesday in the month, I guess.
The other board member announcements? So, of course, the, Mr. Lamb said the auditorium was just gorgeous, and I'm sure it's, I know, I'm sure it's going to be a frequently requested venue for events. We have one tomorrow night. There's a film that's being done by the Ashokin Center, shown by Ashokin Center and.
As a speaker.
Speaker. Ashokin Center and Woodstock Day School tomorrow night. I forget the guy's name. He's a well-known climate.
Dr. Hanson is his name, right?
Yeah. I think it's at 7 o'clock. I'm hoping to attend.
And that's really kind of a part of a multi-day event that's going on at the Ashokin Center that's taking place, and our students are involved, and Mr. Virch has been instrumental in putting this thing together and working with the Ashokin Center to make its habits. We have four-day climate summit, three-day climate summit that's going on at the Ashokin Center. We're more the only school, I think it was just us, Soretz, and Auntie Yorin, Olster County who are part of it, and the school districts from further south. So, this is kind of part of that, you know, this kind of came out and they asked for us if we would host that. So, we decided that would be great to have a host here and have our students go out to the Ashokin Center. We're hoping the weather doesn't cause too much of a problem tomorrow for it, but, yeah, we have, we have students going out there. So, and while there is a cost involved, the Nobel Foundation has, is providing the fee for our students to go.
I will not be attending that tomorrow because I do have to attend the Prox and Recreation Committee meeting tomorrow night, so that's what that will be.
And so, we have a retirement, what happened to the employees of the D. Stadium Commission? Were they hired by the city or?
They, well, some of them, they were city employees, right?
They were already city.
So, and, yeah, so, yeah, Mr. Goodfather will be retiring, I believe, April 1st. So, I don't know anything about his replacement.
I'm confident the mayor has.
Somebody already.
How many students came from other districts for our, for the executives' state of the county?
I don't know off the top of my head. There probably, I know, I know the Freemans said there were 80 students or something like that there. There was, there were more than 80 students from Kingston alone that were there. We probably had close to 300 students total district, I mean, from all the districts because they built that whole centerpiece, so.
And then there were at least 100 other people on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's, there were, there are a lot of people there, surprisingly. You know, it was, I think, the only, the only district in the county that didn't send students was Soretz. So, there's, some came in smaller numbers, but.
The superintendent.
Superintendent was there.
Crept back in.
Hi, everyone.
Okay. No other business will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Public comment?
Oh, oh, public comment, I'm sorry.
Public comment?
Public comment. Mrs. Bauer was in Florida.
Well, the only public is here, it's Ben. He hasn't said a comment.
So, they're motion to adjourn.
So, move.